I do not see anybody that has registered for public comment. With that, we will turn to disclosures and recusals from the members of the body. If you have any disclosures or recusal, please raise your hand. In none, we will go to our discussion items. So let me, before we go into the discussion items, my hope is that we can have a two-hour meeting today so that we can have, you know, focus time and spend two hours. It doesn't have to be two hours. If it's less, that's fine too. But if we can end by eight and before we end, talk about next steps as far as next meeting, that would be really helpful. So with that, our first agenda item tonight is a discussion of the council's role and response during the COVID-19 emergency. And there were three kind of major themes. One that that I wanted to put out to all of my colleagues for discussion. The first one is how do we interface with Emergency Operations Center? The second one is constituent communication and engagement. And the third one is the board committee and commission meetings. So I'm going to start by opening it up for thoughts and observations about what our role can continue to be doing the emergency. And again, the second item will be really talking more about our role and processes and structure for the recovery from COVID-19 emergency. So right now, really focusing on our current situation and how do we make sure that we're most effective in our role as Alders. So I'm going to open it up for discussion and please remember to raise your hand. I'm sure you all have thoughts. I have, I see no hands raised right now. No hands raised yet. Okay, Alder Morland. Try and unmute you.
Okay, I'm here, yes. I, I hope, because, and I have exchanged emails with you, President Badar. I, my hope is that at some point, we come up with some type of protocol so that if something like this happens again, which hopefully it won't in my lifetime, there is a role for the Alders to be able to communicate with constituents and other concerned citizens. I, I felt like I was at a loss. I didn't know what to do. The city did great. The city communicated out appropriately. But given my role, I just felt as if I was supposed to do or should have been doing more and just didn't know what to do. So that's my hope for the, the outcome of this.
Great. Thank you, Alder Morland. Other hands to be raised. I see no hands raised.
Alder McKinney had her hand raised.
Alder McKinney and then Alder McKinney, would you, I'm going to unmute you. Would you like to speak now?
Yes, thank you, President Badar. I too felt very much out of the loop. I want to commend the staff and the mayor's office for really stepping up and effectively carrying on. But there was a responsibility of, for us as elected officials to be responsive as well in two phases. One, we were not able to communicate with each other. And that was very, very important because our districts are connected. And this impacted the entire citywide. So we lost the opportunity to come together in emergency session. And that was not acceptable for me. And then secondly, is just to be responsive. We, I did a lot of cutting and pacing and sending out information. But I felt as though I was a public information officer and, and cutting, pasting was not effectively leading. And so I agree with Alder Morland is that we should find a better, a protocol for us to be involved as elected officials.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Next, I have Alder Furman in the queue. Go ahead, Alder Furman.
Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in and try to talk a little about, at least my thoughts on the interface with Emergency Operations Center. Number one item on, on this portion. Been kind of thinking about it a bit and it, uh, we talked at our last meeting about the idea of Alders possibly participating in EOC, which I think is a level of micromanagement that is just really hard and not possible. But, you know, the other, the other thoughts that kind of have come to mind is, could we participate in EOC briefings? And I think there are a lot of different problems with that, including open meeting laws, including some of the content that's discussed there. And then also, you know, an alternative that, that was thought of was could the, the council chief of staff report back with summaries on EOC discussions? And again, I think there's also similar problems with the EOC discussions becoming more public. So I think, you know, hopefully what we can work on is, you know, continuing to get better information from the council, council chief of staff, who I understand participates in some of the EOC stuff on, on what's going on there. So we're able to answer questions better from residents. And so those are just sort of some of my thoughts that I've written down and talked to some people about, about interfacing with EOC center. And, you know, hopefully we can talk about a little about how we all be more comfortable with a process on dealing with, you know, how EOC is set up now.
Great. Thank you, Alder Furman. And I just wanted to point out that Chief Davis, who is the head of the city EOC, is with us this evening. So if there is specific questions that want to be posed to him, he is available. I wanted this time to be really focused on Alders kind of talking. But again, he is certainly available for, for any questions that, that may come up directed towards him. So thank you. The next Alder that I have is actually Alder Rohr. She wasn't able to pull her hand up, but she's in the queue. So I'm gonna unmute Alder. If I can. Alder. My unmute is not working for some reason for Alder Rohr. Tag, can you unmute on the Rohr? Because it's not allowing me to do that.
I clicked it as well. I think she has to confirm on her end.
Alder Rohr, can you confirm? Okay, I'll go up to the next Alder and then we'll, we'll come back to you. The next Alder that we have is Alder Evers. Go ahead, Alder Evers.
Thanks, Shiva. I appreciate it. The, uh, the flow chart is something that I'd like us to address. And I, I think it'd be appropriate to discuss the, the position of the council. And I'm not pointing any fingers or casting any blame, but I would like us to get a new flow chart that shows the Alders in an appropriate place as contributing to policy even in the midst of this crisis. Not just retroactively, not just thumbs up or thumbs down. And perhaps the role, whether, whether, you know, I don't know where our box is, but I think we as Alders should be discussing that. I do think there is a role in the planning side of things when it comes to a problem that's been identified, perhaps identified bubbling up from concerns expressed by constituents, that there is a place for us to participate in and a policy response. And that's one of the problems with the BCC's not meeting because our, our process, generally speaking, is to, to work through the committees and to draw upon the experience and the wisdom and the insight of residents in the community. So I know that's a, a, a point that'll be coming up, which we'll be talking about. It's kind of hard to divide the, that conversation or separate that conversation of how we plug into the EOC. So I'd like to see some role where Alders have access to, to the box that Heather Stoudt and planning is, is engaged in. Because I think they're, that's a point. I don't, we don't want to micromanage operations and get involved in that. I, I can understand how that's problematic. But when it comes to policy responses, we should be participating and articulating those solutions and have a means for discussing that and taking that back to our residents and figuring out how we can contribute to a path forward.
Thank you, Alder Evers. Next, I have Alder Rohr. I'm gonna try you again to see if, if we have any success with the unmute button. So.
Alder Rohr had to, she was having trouble with connectivity. So she's actually going to leave the meeting and then come back in, in again. So we'll, we'll try promoting her again and see if that changes anything.
Okay. And the next Alder I have then is Alder Rumel.
Hi, everybody. First, I would agree generally with Tag's summary about let's, can we revisit the flow chart and find a more direct part for the council to, it could be the chief of staff if that makes more sense as far as, you know, privacy, I don't know, whatever. But somehow more a direct route into this, this emergency team. And my second point is, if I do try to follow the protocols, I, I just want to know the boundaries. Like, I know if something is about the crisis, the pandemic, to go crazy up the chain. But there's so many things that are just sort of normal that maybe the pandemic's making worse. Like, everyone's at home, so people are getting tickets. Is that a thing that goes to the emergency team? Because they would be through the mayor's decision-making. Revisit whether outside of downtown, we are relaxed, the two-hour thing. So people are getting tickets. And, you know, it started to be a buzz everywhere, like, oh, they're ticketing us. So we're, we're stuck at home and whatever. But at some point, there are things that I feel like I should just go to staff and it'll be in their queue of things to deal with. But I, I want to, you know, do it right. But so that what to me is like, what's the balancing act with sort of your daily work versus the emergency work? And that's basically, and I, I agree with Barbara's point about we're the glorified PIOs. If, if people are gonna every day give us reports, make them packageable to send out. Don't write it to me, write it to my constituents. So that I don't have to like change it so that it's like it's only insider thing, but it's the outside words. And then we could just, we could do, like she said, copy and paste. But I feel like I'm always like finding, looking for the latest. I check on everybody else's blogs that I missed something. I sometimes steal from others' blogs. But I, I feel like I spend a lot of time doing that. I don't mind it. But I, I just feel like I'm chasing information if I'm coming in a couple of hours after the news is out. So it might be good to have, you know, Quazy or some way to do a, you know, a four o'clock briefing or whatever it is. That's all I got. Thanks.
So Alder Rumel, can I just clarify from my, my own notes, what you just said? So would, would one of your very specific suggestions would be like, for example, having like a four, four o'clock roundup that's different than the daily updates that Quazy's providing right now? But it would be written like a blog? Like, it would be like what you would be putting like a, a common blog? You can add to it. Of course, anybody can add to it. But that like, it would be like written to literally take that and make it into your blog for the day?
Right. For my, you know, COVID update today's date.
Correct. Got it. Thank you so much. That's very helpful. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you very much. And I have two questions and I'm going to add a second part to Alder Rumel's request, which was excellent. Looking at the flow chart, could you explain? And I know that Chief Davis is on the line. Where it says liaison, John Hausbeck, what is that role? I'm not really sure because it's connected to the, to Mary Batari and her block and then the public information block. What is the connection with John Hausbeck?
So I believe that's a question for Chief Davis? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and unmute Chief Davis. Keith?
Thank you, Alder. John Hausbeck is our P I, or our public health liaison. So every day that we meet as an Emergency Operations Center, every morning, he gives us an update on public health issues. So we typically get a positive count. And then typically updates us on any trends that are actually occurring or new guidances that may be coming out through Department of Health or CDC. So he's just an information deliverer to the EOC essentially. I see that the, 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 the org chart is up currently. Those arrows actually don't connect PIO and liaison. And, and so nobody has more power than anybody else. It's, it's more of a circle graph that's in a square mode.
Okay.
John's role with the EOC is just guidance.
Okay, thank you. And so my follow-up is, is that with the, with Quazy doing his daily roundups and when Alder Rumel really suggested a, a summary, would it be possible during, specifically, we're talking about what's before us now, would it be possible to at four o'clock or six o'clock, whatever that time would be, is to do what we're doing now is to have a, a verbal roundup of what's happened for the day through our chief of staff? And then a summary where we can post, you know, literally going through and deciding, cutting and pasting takes a lot of time. So I would like two things. One, a regular, what would have worked for me is to have a regular update. It could be from the chief of staff. I would have been okay with that. But at a certain time, what happened to the day and what we're facing? And secondly, how he's doing the weekly or daily roundup to put all of that in a packaged information so that we would have that. So my, I have two questions is one, a daily check-in roundup where we can say at six o'clock, you know, those who can dial in, this is what happened to the day, this is where we are. And then secondly, to package that information so we don't have to be cutting and pasting. So those will be my two, two requests.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from you, Alder, or suggestions? No? Okay. I think Alder Rohr now is back on, so I'm gonna, I still, I think you're unmuted. I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, I think I am.
Okay.
Um, I left for a minute and had to come back in, so I missed a little bit. But I wanted to kind of bounce off of what Keith was saying, especially about being involved in EOC. You know, I, when I was thinking about what my role was, I think it was really hard to think about how I could be involved without having access to a lot of the information. So I'm sure like a lot of other Alders, I did reach out to the EOC team and kind of inquiring about how Alders could be more involved in the conversation. You know, originally I thought maybe having an Alder in each of the different areas of the EOC so that we could be a part of that process. But the response I got back from Chief Davis was really helpful in that, you know, because of open meeting laws and not wanting, you know, all the decision-making processes that happen in EOC to be public information taken out of context, that it really makes most sense for us as Alders to get information through the council chief of staff and to maybe just have a conversation about how that information can be more robust and accessible. And then something I talked with a couple Alders about was, you know, if we're getting similar questions from constituents and asking the EOC for answers on them consistently, like having some place where we can put together FAQs from residents so that we don't have to each individually be going to EOC trying to get answers on these questions that we're getting frequently.
Thank you, Alder Rohr. I have next Alder Furman. Go ahead, Alder Furman.
Thank you, Council President. I, I wanted to reiterate the, the PIO nature of, like Alder Rumel was talking about and other Alders were talking about for, for a little bit. And I think I've heard or, or felt some feedback that maybe there are some people that think us being, you know, just pushing out information to residents or just being a conduit to residents isn't enough. But I was speaking to a, a resident in my district who made it incredibly clear that people right now are completely overwhelmed with information. And then when they hear stuff from their elected officials, it makes a huge difference. So I think, you know, it was a good reminder to me that even just copying and pasting things and sending it out to people is incredibly valuable and incredibly helpful. So I'd like to definitely see us continue that and see, you know, I'm not sure if, you know, Quazy or our chief of staff is, is the right person to be writing up the prepackaged blog stuff. It sounds like the city is doing that more and more. But I'll tell you, like, you know, this was a rough week. On Monday, we got an email, our daily roundup at 7:53. And the first item in there was from the governor that the election was suspended. And then later on, it, you know, there was a note at the end that says, please see later on. I desperately at that point, when I got that email, was looking for a concise way of explaining what was happening that day. There was so much that was happening that day and that just wasn't available. And so I woke up the next morning hoping that somebody would have sent something out and ended up writing up my own thing at 5:30 before going to the polls. But, and then the next day, you know, there was a, also on the roundup at, at 6:30 was, please get the word out, elections are today. So I think we need to just be a little bit more focused on what those roundups look like. And I think splitting them up into like a prepackaged, like, here are some great things. Go ahead and post to your blog. And here are things you need to know that are going on behind the scenes or some good articles would be good. But I don't think, I don't think putting all that on Quazy slash, you know, the chief of staff is necessarily the right place when there are other people in the city right now that are, are packaging these things up and communicating. And we just need to probably do a better job of getting that because there are so many PIOs involved. I did want to ask the chief some quick questions about, if he has thoughts, I'm sure he's heard some of, some of what we're talking about today and has thought about more about what role Alders can play interfacing with the EOC. I know, you know, the goal is to try to go through Quazy, but then also getting updates from EOC. If the chief has any thoughts on that structure and that relationship.
Thank you, Alder Furman. I'm going to click unmute the chief. Trying, chief. Go ahead, Chief Davis.
Thanks, Alder. That's a good question. So maybe one thing that, that might help explain a little bit about the EOC. It is not a policymaking body. So we truly, and I can run through real quick what we're working on right now as far as this week, next week, and in the future. We've, we've calmed down quite a bit now that the election's over. We've handled just under 700 requests or items through the EOC triage. And when it comes into the EOC triage, whatever it is, and, and some of the things, you're absolutely right, are not EOC-type issues like barking dogs and things like that. Some of those normal things that are outside the pandemic don't necessarily need to go there. In fact, we don't necessarily want to see them. However, the operations section housed or found housing for just over 300 homeless people in about a 10 to 11-day span in six different hotels. Once we got them placed, now they're working on the support network and all the different things that, that people need to be successful in these respite-type areas. That's been a huge focus of operations. And now that the elections are over, they were very, very impactful in moving people into the clerk's office to do a lot of additional work that was outside the realm and a lot of things like that. Planning has, has worked on essential services for the city so that department heads can have guidance around their workforce. They worked heavily on the elections. And Heather, you know, with, worked with Mary Beth and Eric Nepp for probably 12 to 14 hours a day to come up with a good plan for our elections and supporting our elections. And I can tell you, and I'm sure you've all read it, Madison knocked it out of the park compared to other communities in the state. And that didn't happen by accident. That was, that was a lot of work that Heather's team put in around planning. Logistics, we are just working nonstop, day in and day out, on personal protective equipment. The demand is, is far outweighs the supply currently. And, and so our logistics team works nonstop, all day long, every day, on, on getting more personal protective equipment. And then finance is doing what finance does. They, they have central purchasing stood up. And they have cost tracking and they're, they're telling us about reimbursement and different things to track and personnel cost tracking. And they're a very busy unit in this EOC as well. The liaisons really are outside agency contacts, outside of other emergency operations centers. Myself and Ed Ruckregal spend time every day with the Dane County EOC. And we spend time every day with the state EOC, as well as a couple of days a week with the UW EOC. days a week with the UW EOC. There is no policymaking that's happening. It's all strictly operational support. And so, and that's it. The mayor comes in and breathes with us every day to get our thoughts and her thoughts as we plan out the next phases. And so that's kind of where we're at today. And moving forward, we've got, planning is going to shrink way down. We've got a team put together to work on worst-case scenarios for our community, i.e. if we really get a lot of sick people and have a tornado, how are we going to manage to continue to provide service? Those are some of the things that that planning team's working on. So I don't know if that answered your question or not, Alder Furman. And if it hasn't, I wish you would ask it again, because I feel like I got off on a little bit of a tangent there. Maybe overshared.
So I found that update extremely helpful. I think my question then would be, you know, do you have suggestions on good ways for us to be connected to EOC going forward based on your experience so far and based on, you know, hearing people feel like they're lost?
Yeah. And so I'll answer it this way. I think, you know, I've heard some questions asked almost like it's a past tense. We are just on the tip of the iceberg with this thing. We have not seen a significant amount of sick people in our community yet. The stuff that public health has done has really worked to flatten the curve, and we're hoping it stays that way. But we've got, in my mind now, is economic recovery, there's housing issues probably currently and in the future that need to be worked on, food supply security are some of the things. So really, the policy-driven decisions that the EOC hasn't addressed and really, we don't have probably a lot of interest, if you will. I don't know what the right term is to address that. And so I think those are the areas that, as a council, there's more than enough work to do around any one of those issues, as well as small businesses and that type of thing.
Great. Thank you. Alder Furman, was that all your questions? Thank you, Chief. I'm going to go next to Alder Evers.
Thanks, Council President. And thank you, Chief, for that summary that was helpful. And while I don't fully understand what open meetings laws would be violated from having council representation in these different boxes that are set up in the flowchart, the incident command structure, or whatever that is supposed to represent, I trust that you can give a good explanation for that. And I hear what you're saying, that it sounds like this, the EOC is more reactive and operationally trying to put into place the policies for the city. But the flowchart that's been handed to us shows policymaking solely in the hands of the mayor, the executive branch. And I do think we, as a council, need to have a discussion about putting ourselves, the council, up in a box adjacent to the mayor, that we are involved conversationally and policy decisions that can be implemented. Because I'm assuming that this could go on for some time. And without our boards, committees, and commissions, we have no influence and no, or very limited influence in the determination of policy. To surrender policymaking solely to the mayor, I would say to my colleagues, that does not seem right. And I see at least one Alder shaking his head that the idea that we would have a policy role at this time is not appropriate. But I'd like to hear from those who don't think it's appropriate and those who do. And if there's, if we can move forward, if there's an agreement that we should have an effective role in setting policy that the EOC could then therefore implement, how does that look? How can it be portrayed visually, pictorially in the flowchart? And how more can it be expressed functionally as we move forward?
Thank you, Alder Evers. I'm gonna go to Alder Heck next.
Thank you. I agree with the points that Alder Evers just made, but Evers, damn it, I always mispronounce his name when I'm speaking. But I guess, I see the question more as how can we collaborate with the mayor who is in that policy box all by herself? And, you know, as we've seen, there have been policy solutions to some of what's been flowing out of the pandemic crisis. I don't think a lot of those came through the EOC. They probably came, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but they probably came from the mayor's office in collaboration with staff. Some, no, they did come from EOC perhaps. Okay. And I just want to...
Alder Heck, who are you reacting to when you said that? I'm sorry, maybe I'm not seeing all this.
I could see the mayor shaking her head no.
Okay.
And maybe she'll want to respond. But I just, I feel like those policy solutions must get battered around and, oh, what do we need? What can we do? And it would be great to, at that point, outside of EOC, if it's not appropriate for us to be in EOC, to at least have a discussion mechanism where we can contribute to those ideas and solutions. I don't know the venue for that, whether it's CCEC or whatever, but I would say we do have a voice eventually because the ordinance that we enacted does allow us to amend or reject or accept those policy solutions that have come down. I just think we need to be involved a little further upstream. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Alder Heck. I have Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you. I wanted to go back before we move solidly into our policy discussion. I wanted to go back to Chief Davis because the summary that he gave us of what the work was, was exactly the piece that was missing. So my question, Chief, is that what would it take for such a summary? In your view, this is what I'm asking, the summary that you just gave us in terms of what's working and where these different components are within the org chart, how would that summary look like if you did an overall update as you just did for the council? Would that be possible? Would that be micromanaging? How would you see that being a reality? I want to make sure we nail down that piece before we really dive into the discussion of policy discussion and where the mayor and the Alders fit, because I need to get that piece cleared first.
So it wouldn't be hard to give you an update at all. And I guess we could, we could try and figure out how often you would want it. There is no, I can tell you, there is no policy decisions being made. And so to hear about our work on buying or attempting to buy protective equipment and keeping agencies updated on the changing DHS guidance for workers and different things like that, if you're interested in that, we can figure out a way to summarize that. And we would just have to know how often that you would want to see a summary like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Just need some guidance from you on that.
Thank you. That, that does answer my question because when we're looking at process and we are just at the tip of the iceberg in terms of this virus, we really do, and figuring out the timeliness and like, you know, how often, that's a process that we really do need to, so need to look at in terms of Chief Davis or his designee would be providing the council with a daily, I'm not saying daily update or whatever, but that's the kind of information that was missing for me. Now, I wanted to make sure that that was flat before we really moved into the policy discussion. So how often, that's a discussion that we would have to determine, but that's exactly what I would be looking for.
The other question I would have around that, Alder, is the usage on your end of that information. That would help us craft that message because if anybody uses it as a pass-through information onto the media, that wouldn't work very well. And so we would have to know kind of on the user end, what you would plan to do with it, right?
Good. Okay.
So just keep that in mind, too.
Right, right, right.
Alder Bedar.
Parking lot for discussion.
And Chief Davis, can I just, again, I'm just gonna clarify just so I don't put words in your mouth. And the reason that that information is not information that is widely shared publicly is because it's ever-changing and also it can create certain misunderstandings within, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Like you say today, we are, we don't, we are still looking for 1,000 PPE for firefighters. And that gets out, that can become a whole narrative in itself because the next thing could be that in two hours, you've been able to purchase them. Is that correct?
Right. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I have Alder Carter. Sorry, Alder Carter, I'm trying to unmute. Are you able to unmute on your end, Alder Carter? Because I'm pressing and you're not... Okay, Alder Carter, you're on.
Well, I said many words of wisdom while I was unmuted. So I will just kind of sum it up at this point. That's one of the things that I wanted to say, Chief Davis, is that some of this information, let's face it, that our emails are open records and we've been, many people have asked for our emails on whatever subject. And I really want to caution, and she again said it best, but I really do want to caution the amount of information that we're getting. Just recently with the Clerk's Office, the media got it wrong on when the absentee ballots was the deadline for that. And we had to go back out and get it and get the right information out there. So I just want to say, let's proceed with caution because it is totally in flux. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Next, I have Alder Martin. Oops. Go ahead, Alder.
Okay, can we, can we hear me?
Yes.
Am I good? Okay, I'm putting myself back on here so you can see me, too. So I have a couple, a couple points. I do really like the idea of having EOC updates from either Chief Davis or designee. I would, I like it just to have that kind of background because we do, I know, I'm sure that other Alders get emails or phone calls about people that say, well, what about getting masks for, you know, the city bus drivers and this and that? And while it's easy to, I mean, we can say things like, you know, while we're working on it, I would personally like to have a little bit of background to know exactly what is happening and how we are working on getting like extra masks or PPE for whatever city staff needs them. And then being able to, well, kind of say the same thing, but at least kind of understanding where we are in the process. Not necessarily to let every constituent know or to let the press know or anything like that. But I think it is important for our own edification to have those kinds of answers and ideas of what is going on. Excuse me. So my, the next thing I wanted to mention is the point about talking about, well, we're just, you know, copying and pasting, we're being public information officers. I wanted to let folks know that there was a poll from Marist that came out a while back, March 17, I think, around that time, mid-March, that said that when people, when Americans are looking at the information that they're getting, the information that they get from their local electeds are the ones that, that's who they trust the most. And so I think it's very important for us not to underestimate that kind of, whether it is just cutting and pasting, or whether it is someone who is going and looking for extra information to put into their blogs or to personalize, you know, that is a really big deal because they are the ones, you know, we're the ones that our constituents see, I mean, not these days, but like at the grocery stores and all of that. So they, they trust us more than state or federal officials. So I wanted to note that important point. And then my last kind of point was about the body and about having our policy part in this. And as we were all still meeting, I kind of don't understand how we, we're being stopped from making policy. We still can do things. And I kind of want to ask the question, like, what, what is the kind of policy that we should be making? And what is the best way for us to make that policy? And whether it is to be included on a full flowchart or it's something that we do and it's not necessarily on a flowchart. I just, I would like to hear more about what kinds of things we could be working on and what we need in order to make those changes. So that's just my question for the body. And now I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Martin. Alder Evers is up next.
Thank you. Back to this policy discussion. I really appreciate when the Assistant City Attorney, Marcy Pearson, sent out the messaging around the emergency orders that were issued previously, including a fiscal note. I would like, I think, I would ask my colleagues to join me in requesting that future emergency orders include that kind of information. I think it's very helpful for us to have that, not just, and it would preferably if we could have them when the orders are issued, not just right before council meetings when we're asked to either ratify or rescind. And because I think the messaging is really important. And I would also, I know that we have relinquished a significant policy role under these emergency conditions on one level. But I would ask my colleagues to have a discussion about how we could meet more frequently under our emergency conditions if necessary, because I would ask that our mayor would have more open discussions about future emergency orders and telegraph to us the needs that she's trying to, that she feels necessary in order to execute these emergency orders. Let us know, let the public know. I do believe that unanimous votes for all these orders, certainly most of them, if not all, would have taken place, but we need better messaging. And I would like to see a role for us to participate in the policy discussion about the orders themselves, if at all possible, which would mean and require special meetings. And if the full council cannot call an emergency meeting, perhaps we should do that through CCEC. And to get to Alder Martin's question, I do, I do think that's where we function in terms of a policymaking body. I am not satisfied that we yield that responsibility 100% to the mayor under the duration, within the duration of the crisis. And I don't think she's asking for those kind of powers. So what I'm, what I feel is really important, again, that I feel is our statutory responsibility, to figure out how we can position ourselves functionally and coming up with solutions in the middle. and coming up with solutions in the middle of this crisis. And there may be situations, without a doubt, that the mayor needs to go forward in the absence of any uh, checking in and letting us know and asking for our input because it needs an immediate response. Um, but in many instances, our input, I think, prior uh, prior even to the issuing of the order would be and would be appropriate. So I'm I'm looking for ideas about how we can accomplish that. Um, I'm not comfortable that we would just sit back and be a glorified public information officer. It's very, very important that we do that. I take a lot of time in communicating once or twice a day uh, with my constituents. And I don't just cut and paste. I I try to inject my own personality into that. That's my my, you know, it's my approach. And I I'm not saying that that's the right approach. I take that very seriously. But I also don't think that's my only role, communicating to constituents at this juncture. And so what I'm looking for from my colleagues is a consensus about how we can participate functionally in the policies uh, that are set forth uh, under this emergency time period.
Thank you, Alder Evers. I have Alder Morland in the queue next. Alder, um, sorry.
I just want everybody to think about uh, the term emergency. And when we go into a medical situation, we are asked to give emergency contacts. I don't give 20 of my closest friends and family's names for my emergency contacts. I want one person or at the best two to be able to say that this is what this person would want to do. And I agree, I don't want to relinquish any of our policy uh, making authority to to any one person, but people are dying. And if we have to, if we need to relinquish some of that power to one person and hope that they make the right decision, and then we come back together two, three days after that's been out there to discuss this, then I'm for that. But I don't want to wait for 20 people to get together to come to consensus when people are dying. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Morland. Alder Furman is next.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I I think that maybe, um, if others want to speak more about the interface with EOC, I think we've we've talked about that a lot. We've talked about the constituent communication and engagement. Um, I think uh, I think it's a good, I, we're in a good place to talk about more, in my opinion, uh, the board committee and uh, commission meetings and trying to figure out how to get those going. Um, the the stuff that I've heard a lot, um, and and these discussions and discussions I've had with other Alders, um, some I agree with and some I don't, is a lot of people are looking for us as a council and and us and for committees to be operating at this time at 150%. Um, right now, I would, I would say that as a council, we are, we are operating pretty close to 100%. We've had all the meetings that have been called for. Um, we're now obviously having a special CCEC meeting. Um, committees are operating closer to 0%. Um, I think it's unrealistic to expect them to operate at 100% during this time. Um, and and certainly even more unrealistic, in my opinion, to be at 150% um, due to the time and effort it takes to get these things going. Um, and I'd really like us to talk about what what we think makes sense to try to get these committees going with the understanding, in my opinion, that um, you know, it it isn't so easy to get these things going. We are gonna start, um, you know, we are uh, IT capacity aside, we 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 need to take into consideration what what staff's ability is. Um, committees actually don't do work. Um, they they give a lot of work to to the staff. The staff puts things together and then the committees end up making discuss, having discussions and then making decisions based on a lot of staff work. And I think it's important for us to understand what staff capacity is in order to support committees going forward, um, because we can't just assume because we want something, um, we're going to get it. Um, and I I do want to circle back to this idea that, you know, we need to be meeting constantly about emergency orders that the mayor, um, you know, may do in the future. Um, I heard pretty loud and clear from the mayor that she has no idea what she's going to do emergency wise in the future. Um, she's asked EOC for their opinion on that. Um, they're not sure either, um, but they they definitely feel strongly that that the flexibility is important. Um, I I think as a council, you know, we should just keep an eye on that. And if we see, you know, that EOC is suggesting to the mayor that there there are these dozens and dozens of things, absolutely, we need to change the structure. But right now, we do have the ability to vote things up and down. Um, and we do have the ability to give feedback afterwards. But, you know, I think that we we obviously as a council agreed to give flexibility to the administration to make emergency decisions. And so far, you know, even if it's not just life and death, I think it's incredibly important to provide clarity to businesses and 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 residents as as our community struggles. Um, so so far, I'm not bothered by what's happening. Um, but I I certainly have my eyes wide open that if if things happen that, um, you know, we need to give more attention to, I'll certainly be one of the first people calling for a special meeting. But I haven't seen anything like that um, so far, um, coming down that that I feel like, you know, these these are decisions that we need to meet about immediately. Um, but what would say to my colleagues, you know, if you do see an emergency order come down, I mean, you do think we need to have a special meeting, speak up. Um, contact the council president. Um, let the council president know, hey, we need to have a special meeting to talk about this. And that's certainly something that can be put together quickly. But just assuming right now, um, that we need to create this process to have special meetings anytime anything is going to happen going forward, I just think it's unrealistic uh, for staff expectations, et cetera. Um, so that sort of addresses the idea with the emergency order stuff. But I really do think, you know, with with the time that we have, that we should be talking about, um, you know, what what would be useful for our role? And how do we get committees back, understanding that staff capacity is certainly not at all?
Thank you, um, Alder Furman. Um, can I just take a minute to, I think we're moving into the discussion about boards, committees and commissions. So I just want to summarize the first part of our discussion to see if there is kind of agreement or 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 maybe some level of consensus about the things that we would like to see improvement on. So I heard that we would like to have better um, daily communication and um, that Quazy's communication has been really good, but maybe having um, in addition to like the communication that's intended to us, like really a template of a blog, for lack of a better term, and then people can um, uh, certainly change that. And as Alder Evers, I think, that add their personality and their flavor into that, but that there would be something that is more of a, it really looks like something that you can literally take and put into a a communication to constituents. So that was one piece of communication. The other piece of communication I've heard is to really think about how we can get um, uh, communication from the EOC, but with with the caveats and understandings of what would that look like? What's the frequency and what kind of information really would um, be useful information as updates to Alders? And also with the understanding that that information um, would then be intended to to be for Alders in in a context of EOC and not something that then would be um, sent out and be taken out of context because that can create a lot of um, issues um, for, because there's no context with it. So that's the other one. Then I heard also to make sure that somehow in the image, the flowchart of the EOC, there is a more prominent place where the role of the council is shown. Um, and so maybe one suggestion that I want to put forward is whether there could be just a box that says to the council and it actually calls the legislative body policymaking. Like, it's not part of the polite command structure of EOC because that's an operational structure, but to really call out that the mayor and the council create policy together. Um, and again, that's in the context of EOC and it's the context of just government in general. So I don't know that that makes sense to add in the flowchart or not, but to call out that legis- policymaking is the role of the mayor and the um, the council. And maybe one way to to do it is to actually explain that EOC's role is not policymaking. Maybe that's what needs to be called out in that flowchart. Um, so maybe the other way around. So I'm just gonna put that as an option of either one or the other um, to to clarify. Um, and then I also heard, and I think that was kind of lost maybe in some of the conversation, that there is a lot of questions that are coming from constituents to Alders and some of them are um, the same questions, but they're coming to 20 of us. So we have no way of knowing sometimes that I got the same question, like today. I think probably six of us got the same question about the same issue and we all kind of send it forth. So how can we create a frequently asked question kind of repository? So that over time, when we build a frequently asked question that we can go back to, but also kind of that there is a sense that, okay, this question came up in six different places within or from seven different constituents. Like, 10 of us got emails about people in the parks. Um, and so the answer is gonna be the same, but like realizing that we're sending those tents because we don't know that anybody else has gotten the same question. So those are some of the things that I think we can, that are good summaries. And then I heard um, the the question about um, the meetings, and I think we can come back at, maybe at, before the end of our conversation tonight, as far as the frequency of our CCEC meetings or or emergency meetings of the council. So that that's what I have summarized. Did I miss um, anything in that summary for now? Okay, so then now we are, um, I think Alder Furman started the conversation around the the meetings of the boards, committees and commissions. So can we go to next is Alder Rommel, I think, um, on any of the topics. But I I just wanted to recognize that Alder Furman, who I cannot mute. Okay, now I'm I'm muting Alder Rommel, who's next.
Thank you, President Bodar. And what a good summary. I just want to um, finesse one of the points that you made. And like you said, we all got an email about a certain family in a hotel today. And we found a good answer and it got shared. But it's not even just the one thing where all three of her five or 10 of us get. But every day, like, well, today I'm not working. So I I have to say Quazy heard for me more than maybe is normal. I'm not sure about that. And and Mary, too, because she's smiling. Um, so, yeah, so I pass, I'm now my my way is to tell Quazy and Mary. And if you tell me that's wrong, then I'll change it and do whatever. I stop, I stop copying the chief because he was like, please, Alder, I have plenty of things to deal with and maybe not this. I got that. But it's still, my question is, so every day I'm gonna send stuff to Quazy and Mary, but if there's similarities, when we get to that FAQ, could it be like a daily, here's what I heard about from you? And here's kind of what I told an Alder that might be helpful. Because you might not have heard about the hotel and the family, but you might hear about, you know, the parking or the some other, the parks or whatever it is. So maybe we could summarize the things that our staff is hearing from us as part of his reporting. And that would get the FAQ, but not necessarily that everyone's hearing as well as the type of information in the communication about the EOC would be. I still am not clear when it is that I should just, like, earlier I sent something and now I sent it to Quazy, but it would seem like it's a transportation uh, TE thing. And I just sent it to TE and and engineering. So I'm still trying to to figure out what's the fine line between having to go through this process that we've created and and then not doing that. And I don't think we really discussed that, but I'm ready for us to move on if that's appropriate.
Thank you, Alder Rommel. So again, thank you for for the the detail on that. So I think what I'm hearing is, here is the summary of all the questions that have come up today by Alders and the responses to them. Because I think your point is also, you may have the question come up with you today and then for me, three days from now. But since I didn't know the answer to yours, when it comes up in three days, I may ask it again. Is that kind of where you were going with that?
Because I I don't, I know that, I don't, I feel like sometimes I'm gonna just send Quazy going off in a million directions. And if he just repeats that every day, it, you know, I I want to make his life as manageable as I can through this.
Okay, so like, so so would it be appropriate to say, like, summarize all the questions that have come up from Alders today and the responses to those? To for, and send it to all of us?
If it makes sense, there there might be something that's very specific that does it. But yeah, generally.
Okay, thank you. Alder Rohr.
Well, um, yeah, I think I wanted to circle back to um, Alder Martin's question about, like, what's holding us back in terms of just, you know, doing our own policy and responding to the crisis? Um, I think the the thing that comes to mind is that we're just um, you know, slow moving in terms of coming up with policy and also that we rely on staff. I I personally rely on staff to um, write resolutions and ordinance changes for me. Um, and when I talked with um, some other Alders about, you know, what could our role be like in this? Um, we talked a lot about recovery. Um, and kind of putting um, ourselves in groups that focused on different areas of recovery policy. Um, I'm not gonna be around, but you guys um, are gonna have a big hole in the budget. Um, there's gonna be, have to be some pretty big decisions about um, you know, how to, how to move through with that. Um, and in terms of responding right now, I liked what um, the council president said about collaboration with the mayor, kind of being the main way that we can be involved in policy. But I guess I wanted to hear what people thought about, you know, kind of organizing Alders into focus areas for recovery and then maybe including the BCC committee structure in that.
Thank you. Uh, Alder Rohr, did you have some ideas of focus areas that you wanted to mention?
Yeah, some that we, um, or I, myself and other Alders, when I talked to them, came up with were like food, housing, unemployment, small business, transportation, but obviously room for whatever people are um, think is important.
Thank you, Alder Rohr. Um, next I have Alder Evers.
Thanks, Council President. Um, so the BCC discussion is a discussion about policy. Is it, it seems, I I seem to recall that the emergency orders that have been issued so forth, so far, did come uh, out of the EOC. And and the question was how to respond to these particular concerns. Uh, some from the business community and and staff were asked questions about what can be done, what kind of changes, what kind of recommendations. And without the BCC structure, uh, we as Alders and the residents that we represent really don't have any input into that. And I think it's important that we figure out how to change that and to get more committees meeting. And I I, with all due respect to Alder Furman, the committees do do work. We do more than just give staff work, at least the committees that I'm on. And it's, uh, we don't just serve the technocratic experts, the city staff. Uh, we work collaboratively, elected to represent the voice of the people. And this is a really critical role for the automatic structure that we have in our city. We're to have a primary place in policymaking. And we do that through the boards, committees and commissions. And to neuter that function for any length of time means that we're not involved in policymaking. And so we need to stand these back up. And I really, you know, the Babyu Foundation, which I'm a part of, on their own, went ahead and had a Zoom meeting. And they did it through Robert Rules of Orders and kept track of everything. Uh, they didn't ask permission, they did, they just went ahead and do it. I couldn't make it to the meeting. But, you know, I'm on the Sustainable Madison Committee. Um, that's not one of the, uh, it it seems to me that everybody there knows how to do Zoom. There are other committees that I'm on where the technological aspect of this is, does not seem to be the standing obstacle. And on the other side of the election, I guess I want to hear from those in the know, what are the obstacles to, for committees to meet? Uh, because in the absence of that, really, we are silencing ourselves to a great extent in terms of being able to represent constituents and constituent concerns in a, in a, in terms of a policy role. Though, you know, the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. Um, it it seems to me they should be meeting. Uh, there there are 20 or 30 committees that I can think should be meeting. And so what I'd like to know, and Sarah's not here, so we can't ask her, but I would like to find out from anyone who's on this call, who can speak to it, what are the obstacles for committees to meet right now? Our staff, have staff resources been, are individual staff members been alloc- reallocated in terms of their time and energies in such a way that that they're not available to staff at meeting? Um, that to me uh, is something that I need to know before I'm content to say, okay, well, this is what it is, we don't need to have any more of these committees to meet. But I think we're at a point now where we need to be asking the questions. Uh, what gets in the way for our BCCs to meet? And I think we as a council should ask that all of them, as soon as possible, should be meeting. Um, there and there, and that- There, and there, and that's not, by the way, asking for 150%. That's simply asking for us to get back to the way our city is supposed to run. And I think we can run effectively even under this state of emergency. We must in fact.
Thank you, Alder Evers. And the mayor has her hand up, so I think she may want to answer the question that you posed. So let me.
Thank you, President.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, President Badar. Alder Evers, the constraints are not committee staff time. Although we do have to look on a committee by committee basis, whether the committee staff have been retasked to other things. So it's not relevant at the moment, but just for example, Eric Knapp, who normally would staff the Parks Board, has been working on the election full time for several weeks. Now, he probably will be working through another week or so as we deal with the fallout from that chaos. But after that, he'll go back to Parks and, and be available. So it's, it's not so much the individual department committee staff that are constraining, it's the, um, the tech staff. And so you can see on this call, there are two tech facilitators and that are making not only this, uh, you know, us be able to use it, but also making sure that it is publicly available in a number of ways and facilitating, if there had been any public comment, facilitating that as well. And so it, it requires an additional, at least one, but possibly two staff on the tech side for every committee we stand up. And, and we are, we have drafted the entire media team. We've drafted a number of people from Anona Terrace. And we're in conversations about who else we could draft and, and train. So that we could have enough people to facilitate as many bodies as possible. And so that's one constraint. And the other constraint is that for every body that we stand up, we have to make sure that every member has a device that they can participate on and, and gets at least a, a small amount of training on the platform. But more importantly, that the chairs of the bodies get a little bit more intensive training on the platform because, um, if you, if you haven't used one of these systems before, it's not entirely intuitive how to chair a meeting on them. So it's just, um, it's just time. It's just the capacity of staff to work through each body and, and do those trainings and find the people to staff each of the meetings. The other constraint is that we, we currently don't have the technological capacity to host two meetings at the same time that both are broadcast on City Channel. And so we can, we may, I, I don't want to promise this, but we may be able to host two meetings at the same time if they don't both have to be broadcast on City Channel. But we probably can't do more than that at the same time. And, and if you look at the, our regular calendar of, of board commission and committee meetings, there's quite a few nights where there's more than two committees that meet. So we're going to have to figure out how to manage that or how to reschedule. It is possible that we could stack meetings, have one earlier and one later. But then we'd need to know that the first meeting was going to end on time so that the second meeting could start. Because again, we, we have limited resources for staff and technology. But the IT department is, it, this is a, has moved up on the top of their list. And they're working very hard to, to get as many back as possible. And it is absolutely my goal, I don't, I don't want to speak for President Badar, but it's absolutely my goal to get as many committees back as quickly as possible. And, and we are dealing with every request that comes in. I think it's fair to say the same day or within 24 hours. And we haven't said no to very many. And, and when we have, it's, it's usually been, you can't do it on that day, could you reschedule? So that we have the staff capacity. So we are trying very hard to stand things back up. And it's definitely going to be a phased in approach as we get more staff available and as we get more bodies trained. Because once a body is trained, we shouldn't have to revisit that. They should be able to just keep meeting. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. This is Council President. I just wanted to also answer that question and to say that I think there's been some narrative out there that the intent was to cancel the, the VCCs because they weren't important at this point in time. And that is actually, I just want to dispel that, that conversation. It really is out of the ability to relieve both from a technical and staffing perspective to do it. And our goal has been from the very beginning to try to get them back up as soon as possible. And we've been trying to add as many as we can, as we've been able to do. Some of it has been maybe like, can we like have them meet every other month so that it creates a space for another committee to meet at the same evening every other month too? So that we, we can have as many come back up as possible. And so I, I, I think that, I just want to say that if I could do a switch like this and all committees could start just meeting, that would be great. There is no, I don't think any other intent of not having the committees' voices and processes be part of it. That's why they're important in our regular way of doing business. And nobody's denying that or questioning that at all. It's just a matter of how do we phase it in? And again, that is part of the reason that we haven't even gone out to the, any further than April, May right now. Because our hope has always been that by June, we can say, maybe hopefully, everything can be back up in, if it's not 100%, 80% or 75%. And so, um, so I just wanted to put that out there so that, that there is not a sense that there is some trying to like not have the committees meet at all. It's just been that process that the mayor talked about. Hopefully that, that also helps with the answer. And then I would also say, if there are, I think a number of Alders have raised certain committees. So if there is like issues that, and, and that ties to Alder Rohr, I think, conversation, which is if there are certain committees that we feel are really making sense right now to get back up that are not meeting, not part of the ones that are meeting in April and May, because we want to have that conversation around policy, that is totally germane for us as a council to bring that forward and to do that. I haven't gotten such requests. So Alder Rommel. Alder Rommel? Okay, we can hear you now.
I didn't push anything.
Your hand was up, so sorry, maybe it was up from before. Alder Evers.
Uh, hey, no.
It was up from before?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. No other hands are up right now.
Also, President, if I may add something real quick to what you were saying. I did pass along to you some requests from Alders regarding, um, uh, projects on planning. And I presented that to you guys so that a decision could be made. So I think in response to that and to some of the concerns that Alder Rommel mentioned previously, whenever I do communicate with the EOC, I kind of let them know when there's a trend in the questions. And I try to put the responses, maybe I need to clarify that some of these notes that I'm putting in the daily roundups are based on the questions that are coming in. But whether it was issues about people still gathering at parks or, um, concerns about with the parking or issues with utilities, certain utility works is still going on. I tend to send it to the EOC. And then whenever I get the responses, kind of add them to the roundups for all those to, to be aware of in case they get similar questions in the future.
Thank you. And I would put out to my colleagues as Alder, if there is a preferred like, um, template of how crazy should do that, so that is clear, please feel free to, to provide him with a suggestion of how that, that needs to look like, that would, I think, be very helpful to him. So as you're thinking about how that may look like, just if, if there is a template or, or way that you want him to present that from your perspective as an Alder would make it easier, I think, I'm, I'm going to speak for crazy to say, I'm sure he'll be open to it. And I didn't mean that Alders haven't sent requests for committees to be taking items. They have actually, I mean, I can speak like Alder Evers said, hey, like this UDC thing in my district is really important. Can we make sure UDC met? And, and we, I was like, absolutely, that makes sense. This is the date, is this soon enough or not? So I was just more talking about the policy piece of it, that, that if there are, as we talk about again, policymaking, if there are specific cluster of, of committees that are dealing with issues like Alder Rohr mentioned, like food and housing and unemployment and small business, if it makes sense for particular committees that again, are not part of those that are meeting regularly right now to, to come back up for that, that, that would make, that totally makes sense too. Alder Heck.
Sorry, I'm going to back up just to what crazy was saying. I was thinking that, uh, like the, the FAQ type, uh, information might be most accessible to us if it's on a website rather than a, a string of emails. Because it's kind of difficult for us to find things when there's so many emails that come into us. Just a suggestion, sorry to interrupt the BCC discussion.
So post it somewhere online.
Yeah, like on the council website or something.
Great, thank you. Alder Lemmer, I'm gonna, yes.
Thank you. I wanted to glom onto what Alder Heck suggested, because I was thinking earlier, maybe something like a Google Doc, like that we could look at internally with how quickly information changes, it needs to be updated. That would be a, a good way to track things. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that the JIC is working on an FAQ that would be posted on the website. So if there are, I know crazy has been aggregating them, but if there are particular questions that you would want included in that FAQ, you could send them to crazy and he'd pass them on to the JIC.
Thank you. Alder Evers.
Thank you. I appreciate the mayor's explanation. It's helpful to know what the remaining obstacles are. At the March 17th meeting, I, I recall when we voted, when we voted on, uh, canceling the ECCs and giving the authority to the mayor and the council president to decide which ones would meet. It was said at that time that, um, that there would be maybe a next round where the, you know, you would identify this, these four or five essential committees. Which I noticed ALRC is back in there. I'm, I'm, as an aside, maybe somebody can explain how that happened because, uh, but more to the point, um, in the calendar for April and May, nobody asked me as an Alder specifically. Now I hear that I could have, I, I could have pushed for a, a committee to meet. But, um, again, I, I, I didn't realize that, that that was an appropriate thing for me to do. So going back to that March 17th meeting where, where I think the mayor said that at a certain point, you know, there, there'd be like a next category. You've got your four or five that have to meet in order for the business of the city, you know, like finance, board of public works, this and that. So has there been a discussion as to the next round? And if there are limits and constraints as to how many can meet, meet, can we identify? Is it 20? Could 20 meet now? It can, and can we, and what is, what is the ETA for if that decision's not been made? When can we expect it? Because I, you know, otherwise I feel like we're just going to let this go and inertia will set in and it'll be individual issues on an issue oriented thing. I've got this development thing, somebody needs to go to UDC. Can we stand up this, for this one meeting? Yeah, that's good. I want to see these meetings or these committees actually be empowered to continue to meet, not ad hoc, not when an issue arises, but to be empowered as soon as the staff is there to do so. And, and as soon as the technology is there. So my question, my question, where, where are we at with making that decision?
So Alder, I can give you the list of the next group of committees that has been talked about. So food policy, landlord tenant, housing strategy, CDBG, CDD, EDD, and the complete count. And that one, just because we're in the midst of census. So those are some of the ones that we've, uh, we've talked about. And as you know, UDC landmarks and ZBA were added from that shorter list that we had again on March 17th. That seems like so long ago to me. But so these are some additional ones. But the, the ones that I just mentioned, food policy, landlord tenant, housing strategy, CDBG, CDD, EDD, were really out of the converse, out of the thinking of, I think Alder, Alder Rohr mentioned, like food, housing, unemployment, transportation and small business are some of the issues that really we need to kind of start thinking from a policy perspective. So these were the committees that, that fit within exactly the same conversation. I mean separately, but the mayor and I were having a conversation about what are the, the big issues that were, that are happening now and are going to be long-term issues. And so these committees were certainly a big priority. So again, throwing that out there for, you know, if there are additional lists. And again, understanding all of us would like every one of them to be back on. Nobody questions that. I don't think that's a, that there is a, there is a contradiction there that someone, it's just the barriers that the mayor mentioned. So we're trying to just ramp it up with step one, step two, step three, and then hopefully step four will be like 100%. So that, is that responsive to your question, Alder? You have your, I mean, yes.
Well, um, yeah, that's helpful. But actually I was asking for something more specific. How many do you think we could do right now? Can we do 20 meetings with staff right now? Not yet? Okay, 10? We can, so it sounds like, or, or we're going up incrementally. But it would be helpful for me and I think for my colleagues, as soon as you have an idea of when we can do more, to just be forthcoming with that information that I think that so far, I'd like to know, maybe my colleagues aren't concerned about it, but.
Part of the reason that I, I hadn't sent this shorter list is because I wanted a conversation tonight about it, which is why I put it on the agenda, so that these are, these are the ideas, the mayor, these, these were the lists that the mayor and myself discussed. But I want to put it out there that if there are other priority ones, again, understanding that we all want every one of them, but we're not going to be able to do that immediately. So are there others that, like there is like really a need to, to like prioritize the sooner than, as soon as possible? So, um, so that, that was the reason. So that we could finalize the list and then start plotting them on a calendar and see where they would fall in their normal meeting schedule and then have that discussion, which is can they be moved? And as you know, changing meeting dates and times is not an easy feat. Because there, the members of the community that participate would need to respond to a doodle or to a request, and then we need to find quorum. So that's, that's the work that needs to happen. Okay, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you very much, President Badar. I'm going to go back to Alder Evers and his question is, is that you listed a short list of boards, committees and commissions. And I, I wanted to specifically hear, at what point do we have input on that selection? I know that you said that, you know, this is the purpose of the meeting that we're having now. But that's one of the things I want to lift up is that, one, we've talked about areas that we identified that need to be prioritized. And so, so how is that list crafted? And when does, when do Alders have opportunity to input into those subject areas that we want to prioritize? And then really very, very important is, is that when that list is developed, it is really important, not at just this point, for Alders to know that they have the opportunity not only look at that list, but to. not only look at that list, but to input into that list. And so that's one of the things I heard you address tonight, but I don't know if alders knew that they had the opportunity to add to that list before it becomes a finalized list.
So let me clarify again, the reason, the only list that there was, was the shortlist on March 17th. And after that, if you've been following the calendar, you're getting, it's more than what was on that shortlist. There's additional committees that were immediately even after that meeting added. And tonight would be the time to, again, if we're talking about this conversation of how the policymaking role of the council matches with the priorities of committees that needs to match that, those policy priorities. It would be a good time for us to really make a list of, again, the committees that we would like to see come back in their regular meeting as soon as possible. With, again, the understanding that we are not going to be able to have 100% of committees back on, no, 25 immediately. But kind of making a list would be helpful.
Sure, sure. And just to follow up is that, once we have that list, absolutely prioritizing and how many, and that was one of the questions that came up. How many meetings can IT facilitate? But to have that long list, for alders to look at that long list and for us to prioritize, because as you said, we're not going to be able to have all of these committees stand up at the same time. But really to do, to phase in those committee boards, committees and commissions that we can stand up. And then for us to have some input into where those priority areas are. And I think that that, not think, that that's one of the pieces that really is very important is to get that list. And then also for alders to be able to weigh in on what those priorities are and to phase those, those boards, committees and commissions back in. Because the, and as said by the mayor is that we just don't have the, and Sarah said it in her presentation is that there just is not staffing to stand up all those committees at the same time. But we definitely need to have some input on what that priority list needs to look like.
Thank you, Alder. And next I have Alder Heck.
Thank you. I agree with Alder McKinney, definitely. I think that we, we really do need to think about how we can have input into how these are prioritized. And I, and I appreciate President Badar offering those committees that are kind of on, in the next tier. But perhaps we could have kind of an informal ranking exercise that all alders can participate in. And that, you know, that doesn't mean we're, you know, making a decision, but it's a little bit hard to, to hear four or five committees real quickly and say yea or nay, or wait a minute, what about this? I don't know how such an exercise could be, could be accomplished, but it doesn't seem too complicated. And the other point I want to make is that most of the BCCs have alders who sit on them. And I sit on plan commission and I would say at times we have as many as eight staff people at a plan commission meeting. And we could look at that list ourselves and, and guesstimate how many staff people are required beyond IT and understand what the implications are that, of that. And so we could even help complete that list since we're all, we're on most of these committees. Just a thought, thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Since, it'd be great if, if, it's a great idea to rank them, I think, based on some criteria, right? Because I think, again, we all can, the reason this committee exists is because we think collectively we've not eliminated them, so they have a role to play, right? So if we can have a criteria in that selection, that would be great. And I would take anybody's help in designing some process by which we could do that. So again, I want to go back to a few, maybe 20 minutes back when Alder Roar, for example, mentioned some areas of focus during this time for recovery. And so whether that's a criteria and then another criteria is because those committees see very regular items that come before them that lack plan commission, right? Like there is things that have to happen or whatever the criteria is. But it would be very helpful if a couple alders would want to talk about how to develop some methodology by which we can rank the committee, how quickly the committees can start meeting again. Is that making sense? Thank you. So it goes like if you have an idea, you get a task. So thank you.
If I, if we do develop something like this, I would also encourage my fellow alders to provide input to that list based not just on what's best for your district. Like Alder Evers, I'm anxious for UDC to get, to be up and going because I have development matters in my district. But we need to think bigger in, in terms of what will help the city through this lens of the pandemic. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Carter.
Yes, I was just going to say that if we could get, you, you said you had a shortlist and you added five or so committees to that already existing list. So really we're looking at what's not on that list and prioritizing that, correct?
Or the shortlist I just gave, I mean, it certainly, you know, those are, those are the ones that, that, that you know, is a shortlist. But yeah, I mean, we could be like, those could change if people don't feel that these were key committees. I hate to use that word key committee, that's like, I'm just using it for the purpose of right now, but the next round.
Okay, so I would, I would like to see how we're going to phase in the next round versus trying to look at the existing list and saying this one shouldn't be there and that one shouldn't be there. Because the whole goal is to getting all these committees up and running. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you so much, Alder Carter. Alder Rommel.
Alder Evers mentioned ALRC and it never got answered. It's just a reminder, and I know everyone knows that the annual renewal process is coming. So that seems to me to be something that, you know, is something that needs to start sooner than later. Because, and I don't know if there are issues and they're not open, but I mean, that's something that is like a kind of a long involved process. As I'm sure Alder Vivier and Alder Skidmore can remind us if we need it. But for me, one of the things I would make sure we look at, besides, I like the whole notion of the recovery, is that what's already in the queue waiting to come forward? So, and I'm sure Alder Redar and the mayor have looked at that, but you know, I'm just thinking, I don't know all the things, but say TFOGS is still making its way around. Or something is, or we have, it's a summer of reconstruction of streets, maybe. So does the, so the plans and specs need to get approved? So I mean, I would look at it more like what, what's coming up that we need to deal with? I mean, there's a lot of, like we all know, we think all the committees do important work, but it seems like some things have a, an annual schedule or a seasonal schedule or a topical, it's working its way through. And I think that would be one thing. And I guess finally, and it's, I don't know that I would know how to, to do this, but like the budget has some new initiatives. So like Alder Heck and I have a new initiative to try to do something in around 2036. Well, I checked in with staff and they say it's still in planning, but I mean, planning like with a small P. But you know, those are kind of things like I want to know about. It wouldn't be a committee meeting, but it would be a meeting that I would want to have staff support for. And so there's those kind of, you know, I think that we all could sort of, kind of break it down in different ways, not just our own district, but you know, what we know that is moving forward or plans that we've adopted in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney, are you up again?
Yes, yes, I am. So two comments. One is that the, what I'm hearing is that the mayor and the president, they're not the total decision-making bodies. I mean, there are, all of us as alders will input into that whiteboard. And when I say a whiteboard is to list, as Alder Rommel say, what are the areas, not just specifically to our districts, what are the areas that are, that we can prioritize? So we need to have a whiteboard of listing. And I just recall how we've been doing in our communications. We really started out with a whiteboard of information. And so if we had a whiteboard that, that lists the, the boards, committees and committees and what is, what is percolating within those bodies to determine, you know, what's a top priority, what's a second phase and what's a third phase. And so we've all been throwing out boards, committees and commissions that we've been working on. But until we really start putting pen and paper and having that whiteboard and really looking at where work is at what phase, that we can really determine, you know, where those priorities are, where those phases are. So I would remind my colleagues is that it is not the mayor, nor the president, nor their intention to make those decisions. Those decisions belong to all of us. And so we should be exercising, there's nothing that would keep us from exercising. There is nothing that came from the president that say we cannot exercise that list. There's nothing that came from the mayor that says that we cannot give input on that list. And so it's up to us then to take on our responsibility and form those, this is what we're working on. These are the phases and these are the priorities. And then we can actually look at what's up there. We can talk about it, but until we actually have a document that we can go through, it is really conversation and not any concrete. And so that's one of the things that I would list that we actually need to move on is developing that whiteboard of where the, the priorities are in terms of boards, committees and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Harrington McKinney. Next I have in the queue, Alder Heck.
Thank you. Just kind of going off of that and some earlier comments, as well as thinking about the budget. I feel like, I imagine the mayor's already having sleepless nights about the budget and everything else combined, I'm sure. But I think we can start thinking about the budget. And even if we don't know exactly what the numbers are going to be by any means, some of what Alder Roar talked about in terms of recovery and our continuing reaction to real-time developments are going to frame our budget discussion in the future and make it very complicated to follow a typical budget cycle pattern. So I'm, I can imagine us also starting to use BCCs to help us with that process. And, and I don't really know how that process can work, but I think that's something we need to start thinking about policy-wise right, right away. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Furman.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the updates on the IT capacity and the ability to get stuff up, I think. And, and also the ask that people, we figure out some sort of process of, of talking about what committees should continue to come up as more capacity is available and why. You know, here, here's the, you know, the priority reason for it. I do just want to caution people, we have no idea how long it's going to take to get the next set of committees up and running. And so I don't want everybody thinking that, you know, we're about, it sounds like we're about to embark on a pretty big task of getting a few more very important committees going. That could take, that could take a while, but I do think it's a good idea for us to spend some time. While that's ongoing, starting to prioritize the 100 or so BCCs we have and prioritize when those get up and running if we're still in this state of not being able to meet in person and still in a position of having limited meetings.
Thank you. Alder Foster is next. Oops. Alder Foster.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I was going to recommend that, I think something that we're going to need to start to pivot on is moving away from having a decision-making being so centralized and starting to empower more people to do that work. And I think this might be one of those opportunities where we're talking about decision-making that right now lies with council president and the mayor. We're talking about the council saying, well, we should be participating in this. I think in terms of understanding where we're at with our boards, committees and commissions and our ability to prioritize those, we really should be going out to the board committee commission chairs, to the alders that are on those board committee commissions and also the staff of those board committees and commissions. And I think all three of those stakeholder groups should be submitting information right now about any outstanding items that have, particularly those that have specific timelines associated with them or other general key issues. And just ask each of those stakeholder groups what their opinions are in terms of when they believe they need to meet or when they'd like to meet. And I think that would be a good starting place rather than just looking at the boards separate from the agenda items that, that were on the list before this happened and those that are coming on to their lists. I feel like we could use our chief of staff or, or the rest of the council staff to help do that work and just break it out and, and go and actually make contact with our board committee commission chairs. Again, the alders that serve on those. And as a starting point, actually get information directly from the people that are most involved. Because I think we know what, what the groups have been working on and what we might be working on. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. I don't see any other, other alders in the queue and we're 10 minutes before the 8 o'clock time. So for, one issue that I feel like we didn't really get into more depth about is that the role of the alders in, and the structure around kind of recovery planning, which is, I mean, recovery planning, I meant it to be as of like now, because we need to start working on recovery plans right now from a budget and policymaking perspective. So I, I will put that kind of out there as maybe a possibility for us to have another meeting to think about it. And the other thing that I would say, back to I think something that Vice President Harrington McKinney said, this is a collective work, so I realize I'm the council president, but if people are interested in bringing frameworks forward for the discussion, like what would their roles and processes and structure look like for recovery planning meetings? Like again, Alder Roar would put forward a kind of clusters of areas of work. Is that a structure that we can build around, et cetera? I would welcome that work to be done in, in a group of, you know, one, two alders to bring forward to the rest of us. So just for the body to think about that. I don't see any hands up. So I guess my next kind of thing that I wanted to talk is that right now, we have, we have scheduled another CCC meeting for the 14th, which is next Tuesday. I, is the will of the body, generally speaking, to continue having that meeting, move it to Thursday next week, which is still one empty spot in the calendar for next week. And continue and maybe have the, the discussion about the structure around recovery. Is that something that would work? I, I see one hand up. And then if you, if you have, if your feedback is different than having the meeting next week, just raise your hand. But if not, I'm assuming everybody is okay with having it either Tuesday, Tuesday next week. So Alder Heck, your hand is up.
I, I was going to suggest having it a week from tonight.
On Thursday. Great, thank you. We'll work on that. We'll make sure to send a doodle to, to make sure the majority of council members are available. Any other final thoughts from colleagues? Thank you so much. I really appreciate everybody's participation. I know this have been difficult times from many angles and many ways. And also a challenging time for us to figure out exactly how we can get our bearings as far as how we can best utilize our role as, as a council. So I appreciate everybody's patience through this conversation. So I, I appreciate everybody's patience through these conversations. And I'm going to reach out to a few of you who have mentioned ideas to volunteer you for some work between now and next Thursday. So I hope that's okay. So I don't see any other hands, so I would entertain, I guess, a motion for adjournment. Oops. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Move to adjourn.
Alder Evers.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by not raising your hand. So if, if I don't see any hands raised, we'll take that by unanimous consent of the body. Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.